Monday, October 7, 2024, Inkster City Council Meeting is called to order. Everybody please stand. Prayer. Pika Rose. Can you pray us into the meeting, please?
I have a heart pray. Eternate Father, Lord, we come right now in the name of Jesus, oh God, this is the day, oh God, that you have me. We shall rejoice and be glad and we thank you, oh God, for this meeting with the mayor and the council and all the city associates, Lord God, we ask you to touch them in their minds, hearts, soul and body, Lord God. Bless them in the mighty ways only you can. We know you're able, oh God, there's nothing that's too hard for you. Lord God, touch their hearts and their mind, Lord God, let them hold the light, that men may see their good works and glorify the Father which is in heaven. Lord God, God does not dwell in darkness, he dwells in the light. Bless them, Lord God, give them the vision, Lord God, that you get the glory and we get the victory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Rut- um.
Richardson.
Richardson.
It's the red hair.
Mayor, you have a call.
All right, great. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? We made some changes. Item... Oh, we're still, item A is still on the agenda. Item B has been taken off the agenda, so item C will become item B. Then, we have, uh, item...
What was that?
E. Okay, D will become C. And then we have item D regarding the HVAC system at the recreational complex. All right, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move second.
Probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Presentation, we have a veteran hometown hero flag. Chanel Stevens? Come on up. Welcome. You need Troy?
I need some IT support. My apologies, technical difficulties.
It's okay, take your time.
Yeah, you can, but, uh, I guess you hit a short key that started something and now it's glitching out.
I just tried to arrow down and it's not working. What about one of your hosts or something?
The remote won't work.
Want him to get my host or something?
Sure, I just need to stop this process.
If you know how to do it, if you don't want to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't, I'm actually running a live stroll.
Is it on the table? She showed him. I know, plan or file or something. Nothing on the slide? You know what, while we're waiting for them to get together, let's hit our next presentation from DPS. Who's doing the presentation? Oh, of course, come on up. Just don't touch the computer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
To the viewing audience and to the audience here. Today, we're going to recognize two of our employees.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Today, we're going to recognize two of our employees who were out on the job working and they saw an individual laying on the ground and they immediately took action. Code enforcement came by, gave his individual some water, he seemed okay. He passed out again. So then they called 911 and waited till the police and fire get there. And we all know this individual, it was Andre Johnson. So it was on.
John Layley, where?
Beach and Williams. So today, I have here Pierre Douglas and it says certificate of recognition presented to Pierre Douglas and a grateful appreciation for his outstanding dedication service to the people in your community. And here it says to Malik Harris and grateful appreciation for your outstanding dedication and service to the people of your community. I thank you. Uh, you want to call your family up, y'all can get in the picture. Where Troy at?
I think I'm six feet. Standing back here. Troy, get the picture.
Well, thank you.
Could've been worse. Could've been worse.
How we coming, Troy?
Uh, not sure.
Everybody, we want to acknowledge, let's do it now. Um, we forgot after our prayer, we forgot to acknowledge Ms. Lily Lester passed away, her funeral was last Thursday. She was 102 years old, as well as we lost Quintella Woods, who was a former employee of the city of Inkster. She passed away and her funeral was Saturday. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim for doing an excellent job representing the city at both funerals, got up and spoke. Uh, we want to give our condolences to both their families, of course, and we want to, uh, recognize a moment of silence for both of them tonight. Oh, yeah. I'm going to ask you to tell them, Mr. Martin. Oh, yeah, we have some items from Ms. Lester, if you would like to get a keepsake from her funeral. Actually, Sandra Wiley has them, you just let her know she'll pass them out to you. Uh, there's a poem on it and what was the other thing?
Uh, forgive me not seed.
Forgive me not seed, which you can actually plant and then a plant will grow, you know? I also want to acknowledge Butler Martin, who just passed away, Inkster resident, he's 101 years old. He's a Marine veteran from 1942 to 1949. He also just passed away. Uh, Channel 4 did a story on him earlier today, or Click on Detroit did a new, no, it was Channel 4, Click on Detroit. They did a story on him, uh, earlier today. If you drink the water in Inkster, you live to be 100. That's what, that's what happens. Yeah, can you do it?
We have a copy of it.
I grew up in Inkster, so I could.
Yeah, we have a copy of it, so.
All right. Um, hello, everyone, my name is Watasha Chanel Stevens, I'm an Inkster native. Um, I grew up in Inkster, my family's deeply rooted in Inkster. My, um, uncle was retired Judge Larry Chestain. Uh, we lost him last month and my dad passed away five days later. But I wanted to do something for the community in which I'm from, I'm from Inkster, I'm very proud. Um, and in my experience, I know that people in our community aren't really represented and our stories aren't told, and I think that's extremely sad. Uh, myself, I was one of the first African-American female civil rights officer for the Stanislaw National Forest. First, um, African-American female fire for it, fighter for the Stanislaw National Forest. And it's only because... And it's only because I had positive role models in my life. I had my teachers, Ms. Green. I had my family, I had my community, and that's what pushed me through everything that I've, I've ever been through. And then also, I have a uncle that was a civil rights leader and, oh well, I have a PowerPoint, um, doc, well, Ralph Abernathy, um, small town in Linden, Alabama. He told my mother, never hush a child when they're speaking, they may have something to say that will change the world. So, and I was three months old, I was a crying little baby, so. But that's neither here nor there.
Excuse me, Ms. Stevens, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Well, what I wanted to talk to you about is what is the Hometown Hero Program? The Hometown Hero Program is an initiative that honors veterans. We pay homage to veterans and the people in our community which have served us and have given everything in spite of, um, being away from your family for days, weeks, months, years and deployments, two and three deployments back to back. And one of the things is, why would we do this? Why is it important for us to do this? Our young people, we look at so many negative things on the street corners, um, on TikTok, everything. They need positive role models. They need, I'm not pushing anyone to the military, but they need role models and someone just to say, oh, that person did something. Maybe I could do that. We need to tell our stories, like that, that gentleman you spoke of, I don't know him personally, don't know his story, but I want to know his story. I want our children to know his story. And I got a question, how many of y'all have heard of the triple nickel parachuters? Except for the small group I was over there educating about them five minutes ago. How many have heard of the triple nickel? Raise your hand. One, two. Two, and that's, that's unfortunate. The triple nickel were the first African-American paratroop, paratroopers. Um, they jumped out of airplanes and they did it when no one else wanted to do it. They didn't want to do it. So they sent African-American paratroopers to do it. And they got so good at it that they then began to cha- train for a service, uh, smoke jumpers, how to jump out of planes. That's how good they were. And these are stories we don't know, these are things that aren't in textbooks. This is the history, American history, not African-American history, American history, that everyone needs to know. And I want to know the stories of the people in our community. I want to know the stories of African-Americans, Caucasian Americans, Asians, everyone that served our country. And I want them to be represented and memorialized with a flag if, um, their family would like to. And that's what the Hometown Hero Program is. And another question I have is, why would we do this? We would do this, um, to increase community engagement, create a positive, positive images, role models, and just raise morale after COVID, we need something. I mean, and we see other communities do things, we not doing it because they're doing it, we're doing it because I'm, I think it should be done. I think it would add to our community. And also, the last part of it, real short and quick, to remember those that have gone on and memorialize them and, um, just let their legacy live on, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
And if anyone's interested, just contact you directly, correct?
Uh, my information and email and, um.
I got it, yep.
And my email is soldierherway and then nonprofit is, um.
If we can get like a digital copy, if you could email it to the clerk, that way we can like post it or like online or we distribute ourselves.
Yes, ma'am, I, um, I gave a digital copy to Ms. Rutledge and also my Facebook is Metro Detroit Soldier Her Way. I post information, um, regarding benefits for veterans and, um, any, any, anything I can find that will benefit veterans that are free, whether it's free healthcare, legal services, and also my prior career, I was a minority veterans coordinator for the VA and I retired, so. Metro Detroit Soldier Her Way on Facebook. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Just one second, please. Councilwoman Rich?
So are you planning, you wanted to do the flags like I saw in Garden City with your pictures on it?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is this cost to the families?
This would be, this would be cost to the families that would like to have a flag sponsored. It would take a small committee, um, if approved, um, of myself and, um, other volunteers that want to get together and make this initiative happen. And it, the cost wouldn't be to the city, it would be to the families, it would just be, um, it would take the inju- well, it would take a little part of the city to help put the flags and stuff up and permission and stuff like that, but we could work that out. And, um, like I said, I'm retired, so I'm willing to, got free hands, leg ain't that great, but I got free hands.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going along with that, we're having a Veterans Resource Event on November 9th at the complex, it's for all the different areas, all the communities around us, including Inkster, but we're hosting it from 11 to 4 p.m. at the complex. So put that on your calendar. Um, we have somebody talking about that today? Okay. Okay, that's great, I just figured we were talking about veterans, I'll throw it out there. Uh, November 9th, Saturday after the election. All right, so we move on to consent agenda.
Approval of the September 16, 2024 meeting minutes.
So move second.
Probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Boards and Commission, approval to reappoint Iris Long to the Agent Commission Board.
So move, support.
Probably move to supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Approval to appoint Will Miller to the condemnation board.
So move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Approval to appoint Tavon Hall to the condemnation board.
So move.
Second. We probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Approval to appoint Will Miller to the Construction Board of Appeals, Property Maintenance Board, three-year term.
So move.
Second.
Probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Approval to appoint Tavon Hall to the Construction Board of Appeals, Property Maintenance Board, three-year term.
So move, second.
Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Approval to appoint Carolyn Wilson to the Construction Board of Appeals, Property Maintenance Board, three-year term.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. All right, down to new business.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case number LD 24-38. The parcel is located on the west side of Inkster Road between Michigan Avenue and Chestnut. Parcel ID noted for $360,500.
Remember, this is the one we're going to have a custom motion, so you don't have to move this exact, you can make whatever type of motion you'd like to make. Do we have a motion?
You mean like to table until we get further information or you're talking about up or down?
Well, I think we're talking about voting whether we want to see the project happen in the city at all, right?
Is that, is that the will of the council?
So move. Also move with the current verbiage.
Yeah, y'all have to make the motion how you decide, however you want to make the motion.
So... I make a motion to consider denial, um, of the purchase of one vacant parcel, LD 24-38. Parcel located on the west side of Inkster Road between Michigan Avenue and Chestnut. Parcel ID noted for $360,000 or $360,000, yep, or $500, sorry, 365.
No discussion, Councilwoman Howard, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, we didn't second.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it support?
I said support.
Oh, okay.
The artist is asking, do we even have to put new verbiage in here? We should just read the action item and if we didn't, if nobody wanted to do it, it would just fail, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. That's all I was asking.
So she moved to deny.
She moved to deny, so same, same effect, essentially. If you want to deny it, she moved to deny it. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the denial passes. Okay, item B.
Consider approval to adopt notice of intent resolution related to the city's proposed 2024 capital improvement bonds for improvements to the water supply and sewage disposal system of the city and authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of intent.
So move.
Second.
And probably move to second, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approving the city of Inkster to join as a plaintiff in Wayne County Circuit Court alongside other Wayne County communities against Republic Services. The lawsuit is to prohibit the shipment of radioactive waste from New York to the Wayne disposal landfill in Van Buren Township.
Move for approval.
Second.
We probably move to second, uh, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approving the city of Inkster to expand unbudgeted 2023 community development block grant funds to retain professional architecture and engineering services from Detroit Architectural Group Incorporated for $90,500. This includes design, engineering and architectural services of the HVAC system at the Boca Doja Recreation Center.
Move for approval.
Second.
We probably moved to second, discussion.
Yes, I have a discussion, um, this said unused, so am I, was anything else could have been used with, with those funds?
Yes, as long as it falls within, um, the national objectives for the housing and urban development, we could use CDBG dollars.
Okay, so did any residents try to capture any of the CGB?
Like for a home improvement or some, so we don't offer that program anymore?
Oh, you don't?
No, only home improvement in Wayne County is going through Wayne County, so they administer the home improvement grant directly through the county versus in smaller cities.
Okay, okay, and the reason why I was asking that, because we, I, I have a school just sitting on Annapolis that I've been trying to get cut down for many, many years. And I was wondering, what can we do? Do we need to go out for a grant to get that school torn down because it's an ISO, it has been for the last 16 years? And I know we need a HVAC at the rec center, but we also need to have this school torn down? Or we don't know who the owner is?
We have to own it for us to do it.
Right, but it's been going on for 16 years and nothing has happened and I don't understand why.
You know the address, sir?
Uh, no, I do not have the address on it. You know the sale?
You know the address?
Well, it's been going on for, since I've been on council. Okay, so he's the owner, Mr. Benvis?
We can't, we can't do that, we're out, we're out of order.
We out of order now?
We can't call in the audience.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Well, it's the same guy, I don't know the address at the school.
Can you find out, bring the staff in tomorrow?
Yeah, because, okay, that's what I was asking, because we need to have, we don't, we, it's not city property, but, but it has been condemned for years and I'm not unders- quite understand why we don't have that property to get it torn down. Because, I mean, the grass is cut, I understand, Mr. Benvis, have you guys been going over there cutting? It's so high, we, we have kids going to school, walking there and it's an ISO. Now, they had, they boarded up, it's all gone now, so it's really an ISO. We really, really, really need to find a grant of some sort or go downtown to see if we can get abandon it or something to take it over, to get it torn down. It has, it has changed.
Hold on, we never condemned the property?
Yeah, but, I mean, but I've been talking about since Hampton been on here, so.
I remember you talking about it, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's been a long time, but.
I mean, it started off with the Hearns family.
Correct, it's been going through a lot of hands. Okay, but that was my question, that's what I, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so we can only use demo funds or CDBG dollar funds if we have site control or ownership of the parcel.
And, and one more question before we close this out, why, why do, why don't we offer the CGB grants to the homeowners to improve their homes? I, I don't understand why we stopped doing that.
Ideally, we would offer it, however, when we did offer it, we weren't able to get to many households. So let's say we cap it at $15,000 per house. If our allocation is only $100,000 that year, that has to include code enforcement and administrative fee. If we, we found that we weren't really making an impact, um, one property in particular, I believe we were modifying the driveway and found that it was two driveways there, so we had to do a change cost, a change order. They ended up eating up much of the CDBG, CDBG dollars and we found. They ended up eating up much of the C D B G, C D B G dollars, and we found that it being administered through the county just allows more flexibility, not just in Inksters. Many of the Wayne County communities have turned over their home rehab program to the county for facilitation administration. Because otherwise, we have to follow up with liens and things of that nature too.
Okay. All right, that's all, I do.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes. All right, public participation. Lisa Bernie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So a couple announcements. First, I would like to um let you guys know that I P D now has a first edition of our newsletter. I sent it out to everyone earlier today, um, but the newsletter will go out monthly, and it will have all the information going on as far as um events in the city, um tips, uh with October being not only breast cancer awareness, but domestic violence awareness as well. Um, things that, uh, information people can reach out to for information on any mental health, um, anti-bullying. And if there's anything that people would like to see in the newsletter, they can reach out and we can add that as well. Um, I know it would be great to have um the person who came up earlier talking about the Heroes Program um as a did you know? You know, we all can use extra information, and I think it'd be great to have that. So just be on the lookout for this every month. Next, we have Blessing of the Badge that will take place on October twenty-fourth at the Smith Chapel A M E Church. We are asking every individual to come out to support this event. Um, the event theme this year is Women in Leadership, and so it'll really be nice to have all the women who are in leadership, women just in position, period, to just show up and show out, as well as blessing the badges for, you know, all our I P D service people. Next, we have National Take Back Day, which will be Saturday, October twenty-sixth, at the Leanna Hicks Library from ten thirty A M. to two P M. Um, you can bring in not only all your medication, but insulin supplies as well. We'll also have resources um for um mental health as well as Narcan training, so there'll be someone there doing a ten-minute demonstration on how to use Narcan. And lastly, will be our Haunted Hollow Safe Night Event. Um, this event, we are calling as a citywide event. We, the thought behind it is to have a central location for all of our families in Inkster to attend. Um, we know that Halloween has not been the same for ages. You know, neighborhoods don't participate in passing out candy as much as they used to, and so this is just a central location where families, every one of all ages, can come out, um, do trunk or treating. We'll have uh movies for appropriate ages, there'll be a haunted locker room and bus, um pumpkin decorating, as well as resources just promoting not only mental health, but substance abuse and prevention resources. So we're asking, you know, everyone to come out um and make this event huge. We're also asking for each individual who is an employee of the city of Inkster to at least donate one bag of candy. We want to make this event real big for, you know, all the kids. Um, so if you could do that, just drop it off at the station or call my office, and that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to see all y'all dressed up at Halloween with your candy. Pop the trunk with a whole bunch of candy, not one bag, a whole bunch of candy.
Mini bags.
Mini bags. Katrina Baum.
I got bags right now. You got candy, I'll take it now.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council, good evening, Inkster residents. I'm just here to announce an upcoming stand-down event for veterans. It's taking place Saturday, November the ninth, um, from eleven to four P M. And then I have a second date, which is going to be November the tenth, and that is from eleven to two. So during that day, it will be held at the Booker T. Dozier Recreation Center, and we are going to be giving away a lot of items for veterans, so they're doing haircuts. We have non-perishable food items, we have coats, winter items, we have death, um, we have shoes, emergency shelter, drug, alcohol, and mental health counseling. And I'm sponsoring, um, or working with the V A. Health Department in Detroit, the Caribbean Community Service Center, and Michigan Works will all be present. So I'm hoping that everybody attends. Can I approach so I can hand this to the city clerks and additional flyers?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Felicia Studsdale. Oh, she left? I'm sure, I'm sure somebody called her, she just had a question Saturday about the N S P. program. You, you have her contact information. Barbara Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and the residents of Inkster. Now, I didn't beep on nobody else.
Right, right.
They start beeping on me, really. Okay, all right. Everybody knows I'm up here for the Inkster Goodfellas, no child without a Christmas. Our pancake breakfast will be October nineteenth, which is Swedish Day, at the Booker To, Booker Dozier Recreational Complex, eight A M. to twelve noon. Donation is fifteen dollars. We like for everyone to come out and support the Inkster Goodfellas. Also, we'd like for everybody to take an ad. You could be a patron, a patron for ten dollars for the Good Fellow paper that we do in December. We trying to raise as much money as we can. I'd like for every councilperson to take an ad or do a business card for the paper. I do have tickets. I know Rochelle has tickets. Gabe has tickets. So you don't have no excuse today of not getting a ticket, because it's enough. Richardson, councilperson Richardson has tickets. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They got, they passed them out in the meeting, ooh dee. I'd like to thank co, uh, Councilman Richardson on her forum on this past Saturday. It was excellent. And uh, anybody, if she does it again, and she had the Secretary of State coming to do your license, your tabs, and all of that, remote, it was there in the building. All you had to do was just walk up and get your tabs for your car. Taking pictures for your license, all of that. Placards, if you needed the handicap placard, they had that too. They just, they had everything. Uh, and it was very nice and did an excellent job. Um, I'd just like to, uh, our city clerk, beautiful job in coming to all the seniors. The seniors at the Cherry Hill Square uh apartments enjoyed theirselves, and they enjoyed the lunch and all of that. They had a good time on Saturday. Um, but once again, good fellows, good fellows. We want the police, I need a meeting with you. Want the fire department, I need a meeting with you. So the first Friday and Saturday in December, we can be covered selling our papers. Thank you so much.
Swedish Day, are all the pancakes free for the men?
No, you can get some extra ones.
After we pay.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll throw you an extra piece of bacon.
Michelle Gregory.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, audience. Um, I'm here to ask a question. There are, so far, I counted seven dispensaries in Inkster. Why are there so many weed dispensaries?
Okay.
It is sad.
In December of twenty twenty, the former city council uh passed, created recreational adult rec licenses, and at that point, the licenses were unlimited. There was no limit to it. Last year, I think it was May of twenty twenty-three, the council modified it in lim, I'm sorry, April. They modified the ordinance to limit the number to eight. Um, so at this point, we have a limit of eight licenses that the city can give out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Cassie McBride, even though it just says Cassie, because she's a celebrity at this point.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I, for those who may not know, I am Cassie Jones Mc, oh, McBride. I am the Executive Director of the International Fuller Woman Network, and we do nonpartisan voter engagement across the state with the goal of improving the voter experience. So I wanted to highlight some of the incredible work that the city residents has done leading to the election, and I want to, and what I want to plan to do for the upcoming election as well. So there was a Project Twenty Twenty-Five event beautifully led by Inkster residents, where it was discussed um what the project was and was at stake. I spoke of the importance of understanding that it is a framework that is not held solely under one particular party, and I was happy to provide gift bags and food from local Inkster resident Sticky Fingers Catering, and nearly one hundred people were present from Inkster and surrounding areas. And I'm also very grateful for the leadership of Clerk Holiday and our partnership and strategy around engaging voters in this beautiful city. So on this past Friday and Saturday, I had the pleasure of working with alongside Madam Clerk and what I call the Democracy Drop-In, I'm working on the titles. But uh, it was at Twin Towers, Cherry Hill Place, Cherry Hill Square, and we attempted to do so at Twin Towers. I will allow, Thompson Towers, rather, I will allow uh Clerk Holiday to expand her experience there. We worked with Democracy Warriors and Rhonda Arrington and Carolyn, who helped folks check their voting status, and I was able to give accurate information, and they were able to give accurate information about the status of their ballots. And we signed up folks on the permanent ballot list as well. Latoria signed up folks for Code Red Notification System. For all locations, I hired a food truck from Unique Quesadillas, and they traveled to each location with us and gave free tacos and nachos to folks. Uh, and I also want to lift Donna, who was part of the Deltas, who were there as well, as well as Jennifer, who traveled with us also at different locations. So we get engaged with nearly one hundred people collectively at all four locations. So what I plan to do for the early voting period in particular, which is October twenty-sixth to November third, I've secured some shuttles for all the senior centers directly to this, to the City Hall location, which would be the early polling, early voting site, where we would like to um register folks, uh, if they would like to register that day or vote that day. Um, so we'll be having shuttles for all four locations. Uh, the challenge will be learning the residents of the opportunities, so we'll be working with the building and also different means of communication to get the word out to them. We're also doing a Souls of the Polls event with Christ Temple and possibly engaging more churches through the ministerial alliance with Pastor Hearn. And we are also still staffing poll monitors for all the locations in Inkster, as well as phone making opportunities. So if you do want to be engaged in protecting democracy with me, you can call me at three one three, three six four, nine five one one. And you can also text that link as well, and we'll send a form for you to fill out. Thank you.
Rebecca Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Okay, I just wanted to bring some enlightenment on the um property um that Councilwoman Howard was speaking of. That property was on the market, it is privately owned. It was on the market for two hundred thousand dollars. Address is two six one hundred Annapolis. I had showed it twice, because we did have some interest, and I was trying to push that. I was really trying to push that, because one of the developers actually wanted to build some housing, because it was perfect, you know, right for that. But what they found was that it's full of asbestos, and the asbestos was just overwhelmingly pricey, but then to put that much money and still want to make sure that they sell housing and recoup their rate of, rate of return on their monies.
Thank you. Okay, we have any other comments that were sent in?
I have a public comment from Charles Blackwell. The comment has been forwarded to Mayor and Council and will be put into public records in the meeting minutes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Uh, let's see, Thursday, October the third, I attended the voters' engagement that was presented by the Inkster AKA's. It was at Booker Dozier. I spoke on early voting and answered a few questions. It, they had a seventies theme, and it was beautiful and very informative. Friday, October the fourth, from nine to twelve, we were at Twin Towers. We secured approximately thirty absentee ballot applications and registered two voters. Um, Friday from one to four, we were at Cherry Hill Place. We had fifteen applications. Saturday, October the fifth, we were unsuccessful at Twin Towers. I forwarded them notification, and we were not allowed to go.
Thompson Towers.
Thompson Towers, excuse me. We were not allowed to go inside, and when I pulled up outside, no one was notified, no one was given um information regarding signing up for absentee ballot or voting, and their security did not even know. They would not call the management office for me, so that was a little heartening, but we're gonna go back at it again for Thompson Towers. Um, Saturday, also from one to four, we were at Cherry Hill Square. We did thirteen absentee voter applications, and I would just like to thank Rhonda Arrington and Carolyn Wilson, who was with me on this voyage, and Latoria Joy signing up people for Code Red. They were at every stop, every location, and they really assisted me with this. Um, and also International Fuller Women, as she spoke with the gift bags she presented and the Unique Quesadilla food truck that was there, and Jennifer. I'd just like to say, even though we came from, oh, I'm sorry, Donna Wilson from Delta Sigma Theta Sorority of Inkster Alumni was there as well, um, giving out gifts and providing buttons and wristbands. I'd just like to say, even though we're from different locations and different individuals, we all came together on one accord for the same cause. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer. Okay. Councilwoman Richardson.
Me tearing me up. First, I want to um let the clerk know that the Secretary of State did register voters at the event, and I polled the audience to see anybody here can't vote? Nope, everybody was registered voters. So they, we were able to do that, and I wanted you to know that. Um, also, I wanted to give a special thanks to um Eric Sabree, who was in attendance in um doing the taxes, and to Evangelist Cooper. Um, he did explain the process if you need to make arrangements for your taxes, and he did have people there set up to take your payments. And during the time that we were there, there was a lady that was really overwhelmed um because she thought she was gonna lose her house, and she had a breakdown. And I was glad that uh Evangelist Cooper assisted me in calming her down. And um I just want to give um thanks to Sabree's staff, because they were very um compassionate with her. They worked with her, and come to find out, her problem wasn't as bad as she thought. But you never know what people are going through um trying to live day to day. Um, also, I had a lady that was homeless, and she was expecting a baby. And I'm glad that Wayne Metro was there to assist her. So if we come together as a community and help each other, we can be a better community. Um, also, Eric Sabree. He also told us about uh money. There is a, there's a notice of intention to claim interest in foreclosure sale proceeds. The, um, there was a lawsuit filed in Oakland County where people lost their homes, and there was profits, I guess, made, and they filed a, uh, a lawsuit, and they won. So now Wayne County is doing the same thing. Um, this is, if you had foreclosure- Um, this is if you had foreclosure prior to December 2020. There are forms. I'm going to make copies and get them to the necessary people so that you can claim. This information is on the website for the Treasurer's Office. And we didn't know anything about it. I was glad that he was there to explain that. But I will have copies of it where you'll be able to reach to the city, and then you can follow through with that. So you may have some money coming if your house is foreclosed. Any process, any proceeds, you may be entitled to get a return. So that's good news. Um, also, uh, you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I want to honor all of those, not only just breast cancer, but just survivors. I take my hat off to you, because that is a struggle and it's a fight, and we have to continue fighting. Um, I also have a expulsion fair, October the 19th. Inkster residents and surrounding communities can get their criminal records expunged so that you can get a job. This is being held at Amity Baptist, so I will have flyers for that also. And um just one last thing. To my husband, a survivor, cancer, eight times. He turned 75 years old, and they said he wasn't going to make it. And I just want to say to you, in the words of Marilyn Monroe, "Happy birthday." Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Wow, I don't know what I can say after that. I just want to say too, um, I'm gonna keep it simple. Um, to code enforcement, Terrence, Jaron Vivens and his organization. Uh, we've had a lot of dumpings. Uh, residents have been taking pictures, sending them to me, and sending them to Terrence. And with the help of Terrence and DPS, they was able to clean, clean it up. Um, I'm not sure if it's back, but I just want to tell you thank you, and we appreciate that. And if residents can send pictures, that would be helpful. So once I send them to, to the proper people, they know what to do. So I just want to tell both of you guys, thank you for helping my residents.
Councilwoman Scott.
Um, I just, quick shout out to um Fire Department and Police Department. Um, Thompson Towers had an incident with flooding, um but our city response was impeccable. Um, and I think this whole city really stepped up, and we kind of saw um truly, truly like the heart of Inkster and um what we're all willing to do when we come together, when um our fellow citizens uh need help. So I just want to clap it up for both departments. They made it happen for all the residents. Um, and they were up like late, um just making sure everyone had their basic needs met. So, and followed up the next day to make sure that it was followed through as well. So, thank you. Oh, is he here? Oh, come on, thank you.
Councilwoman Bishop.
Uh, yeah, I just want to second that thanks. Uh, the Police Department, Fire Department did a great job in our community, also the surrounding communities. I know Dearborn stepped up and they had guys bringing pizzas in and Smart Corporation for lending those buses, getting those residents from Thompson Towers over to the complex. And just, it was just great to see everybody coming together and working hard to, you know what I'm saying, uh, help out our citizens. So, like I said, they stayed up late. I've stayed there until about midnight. I got a new four-month dose, so I had to get home, but they put a lot of hours in over there, so yeah, I appreciate you guys.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Um, again, I just want to uh reiterate, like Councilwoman Richardson said about um breast cancer. I attended a funeral um this weekend for Contella Woods, who lost her life uh to breast cancer. And I think how we can honor people who are survivors and also people who have lost their life is to buy um getting our yearly exams. So I'd like to encourage everybody to get your yearly exam for breast cancer. The best thing you can do is um early detection. So that's the best thing you can do. Um, also, I wanted to um announce that the Planet Commission and the City Council, Mayor, I don't know if you should have been doing this, but they'll be having a joint meeting on um November the 25th at 6:30 p.m. here in City Council chambers.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Um, as you all know, the City of Inkster School District is divided, you know, it shares, it's shared by multiple districts. I really recently had a conversation with trustee board member uh Adney Mitchell about Wayne Westland Community School District, and she sent this information over, says, "Please join Wayne Westland School District for coffee and conversation with the topic being transportation." Since the beginning of the 2024 to 2025 school year, transportation district-wide for our students has been challenging, with more than 28 routes being canceled. I invite you to come out to get the correct information, why is this happening, and what the district plans are to get our buses to the bus stop for students. Um, a flyer is going around, it says, "Community and Coffee, Topic Transportation." This is to take place on Tuesday, October the 8th, 2024, at 9:15 a.m. at the William D. Ford Career Technical Center. Uh, join Jennifer Curry, Acting Superintendent, for casual conversation and open dialogue. I believe that's code where for, don't come screaming and yelling and bickering, but come to get positive information and re- and be receptive of what they have to um put out in the community. Thank you.
Just real brief, uh, just co-signing with the other councilwoman said, not in, not only did our employees from DPS, Fire, Police, um, the council, most of the city councils showed up to help people out. I think we had a quorum, but we did not take any action. We just helped folks get from, we had to evacuate half of Thompson Towers, had to get those folks over to the rec center. And you know, we had a lot of wheelchair folks. Uh, we had to call Smart, they, people left their homes to come help us out. Um, we went and thanked them, I think, that Monday afterwards. So a lot of people, you know, jumped off the couch and, and came in and got it done. So I just want to thank everybody. Chief.
We don't want to forget about um rec- the recreation staff. They actually stayed in the building overnight um with the residents so that they wouldn't be in the building alone. And I think they did that um
Two nights.
Probably two or three nights.
Two or three nights.
They stayed overnight at the rec center, so.
Something we have to keep in mind, when the Thompson Towers, the management and their ownership refused to take care of the people in there, we had to pick up and take care of, make sure they are all right. And to me, that was foul. Um, they didn't want to buy a hotel room for people with dialysis, on dialysis, wheelchair bound, nothing. I think the response by the owner was saying, "Well, Mayor, you the one who busted people away from Thompson Towers, so you take care of them."
I don't know.
So I had to calm myself, you know, given that was their building. That situation was a fire, and then the sprinkler system exploded, and it flooded half the building. But, you know, somehow, they didn't feel any responsibility to the people who paid them money every month. But you never, never forget how people treat you, uh, and I won't forget, for sure. All right, I have nothing else.
Can we add on to uh the director? Um, he really went out his way trying to, um, he and his staff, to get people comfortable there. Um, so a lot of them didn't, we didn't have the medical equipment that some of them needed. And so, and I don't know if that's something that we could do later, um, because we just happened, because you know, I got the body man there. And we had equipment that we brought so that some of the residents could use. I don't know if that's something we can do, if people have like different items that could be used in case of emergency, if we could start a storage um somewhere, um, just clean it up, bring it, that's what I did, because we had people that just really couldn't adjust to the low carts or even the toilets, just different things. And if we have that, and maybe that's something that we can start. Um, but they did, they called around trying to purchase, trying to get equipment for the residents, and I applaud you for that. Thank you.
I forgot to do this, when we made, when um Councilwoman Rutledge made the announcement about the uh joint meeting between Planet Commission and City Council, just to amplify on it. I know a lot of times residents ask us, "What is this for, X, Y, and Z?" So real quick, I just wanted to let the community know, joint meetings offer key benefits that enhance decision-making and policy development, including improved communication and a unified vision for growth. So uh this joint annual meeting will be primarily about the master plan update. So the Planet Commission and the City Council will have this meeting. We've done them in the past. I think we kind of got out of a hangover when COVID hit and everything, just kind of went haywire. We'll also be inviting the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, to be there as well. And it's a public meeting, so you all are welcome to come and have your input. People ask all the time about the master plan update and what to, uh, how they can give their insight and input. This is your opportunity. There'll be more to come, but you should be at the, at every single one to carve out what your community looks like. Again, that's on November 25th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. Um, the Planet Commission and the City Council are the voting parties in this meeting. The ZBA will be there for informational purposes, just like yourself. Thank you.
All right, thanks. You have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Move second, are there some papers? Uh, see, I'm sorry, don't forget, the senior forum's October 24th at 12:00 noon at the Inkster Recreational Complex. All seniors are welcome. You can call Sabrina Lawrence or any of the commissioners on A G. Secure your spot. All those papers, say hi.
Hi.